Are you ready to join me for the pledge of allegiance, please? Pledge allegiance, see the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic from which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, Josh. Okay. Welcome to our meeting. Day of celebration as an inauguration for our forty-seventh president happens today. We'd like a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Luke? On favor? Prove the minutes of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting.
So.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Currys. Approve employee claims filed with county auditor for one thousand seventy dollars and fifty cents.
I'll move.
Second.
On favor?
Second. Aye.
Aye. Approve appointment of Corinne Love to Buchanan County Certified Local Government Commission for a three-year term.
Yeah, I'll make the motion. Yeah, this is a lot.
Do you know what that board is? I guess I'm going to do that.
That's the one that Lee Ann Harrison's in charge of. I do not know what all they do, but I think they had three that needed reappointed or new ones, and Crane's been on it for many years.
Each time you get somebody to step forward and say something, so yeah, I second that.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Place on file the following manure and management plans. Bacon Barns LLC Perry Township, section twenty-five.
Whistle. Go ahead. Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Second.
Aye.
Set meeting date for roadside advisory board, and I set that up with Sherwin.
It's February nineteenth at nine thirty in the assembly room. I will be posting an agenda for that, and one of my staff members will be down there to work it because I will be on my way to the point.
Thank you. Uh, letter of support.
Can we have a motion on that, please?
Uh, I need.
February nineteenth, it's a Wednesday morning.
Motion. I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Uh, next is letter of support for the First Street West Improvements, the City of Independence. I was contacted by the mayor and city manager regarding the First Street West rehabilitation program and drafted this letter of support. Kan County Board of Supervisors supports the application of the revitalization of First Street West, enhancing safety and community vitality project under the U.S. Department of Transportation, rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity to the RISE grant. This corridor is an essential gateway to the community. However, it also poses serious hazards related to traffic and pedestrian safety and localized road flooding. Additionally, the corridor has experienced a severe economic decline over the last thirty-five years, when what was then known as Route Twenty was diverted one and a half miles south would become Highway Twenty. This project would help enhance safety for motorists, pedestrians, cyclists, and revitalize community development along the First Street West corridor in the same manner that road enhancements east of Waspinning River spurred economic development for a historic part of the city over the last five years. Buchanan County has several facilities located on First Street West and depends heavily on safe, dependable access for employees and clients. Buchanan County Emergency Management and Public Health Departments are situated on the north side of the First Street. A large parking lot along the front edge could be downsized through an expanded pedestrian trail and street scape project. The Independence Area Food Pantry and Iowa Department of Human Services share a county-owned property on the south side of First Street. Both are dependent on safe access for their clients daily. The Independence Community School District campus has a major impact on the vehicle and pedestrian traffic all along First Street. Every effort will be made to ensure safety along this important route. Buchanan County Board of Supervisors highly recommend, highly values infrastructure and prioritizing rural safety and efficient mobility, connectivity, and accessibility for all transportation users while supporting the economic vitality of our state. Therefore, we support the City of Independence in its application for this RISE grant. Sincerely, John Kurtz, fellow chair of Buchanan County Supervisor. I need a motion to approve.
I will make a motion to approve the chair's letter.
Second. Thank you. On favor?
Aye.
All right.
Did you want to provide any information to the public on this? I mean, it seems like an opportune time to.
Sure, I certainly can. Um, this, this pro, this idea goes back many years, but specifically the fall of twenty twenty-two. The City of Independence was awarded a community visioning grant, and as part of the grant process, we did, started the process when we first were accepted was we had various groups of citizens meet to talk about what their needs were in the community and what they were concerned about. And First Street West was one that was very high on everyone's list in terms of things that need to be done. Lot, we have a lot of drainage problems along that with, in addition to the fact that the road surface itself, I believe is from nineteen fifty-four, if I'm not mistaken, the original road. So we've got water and sewer pipe running along that area that's, that's not, we're concerned about over time. So the, um, community visioning project, uh, in terms of the development of it, they came up with certain ideas that they thought were appropriate, and one of them was some work with regard to the First Street West area. Um, the project was completed in twenty twenty-three, but we didn't have the funds to do any of this. Um, in late twenty twenty-four, we were approached by one of the engineers, IntercoG and some other people told us that potentially we had the opportunity to apply for a RISE grant that could fund the vast majority of this project, and we're talking about, originally, we were, we had, um, a project that would start at, at the bridge, and it would go to Tenth Street, and we were going to do that section, and we had a state grant for that purpose. Um, I can't remember the, the amount of the grant, but so about.
It was about almost four million dollars.
Yeah, I was thinking three point four, but in, in that vicinity. Um, so when we talked about the RISE grant, um, this gave us an opportunity to not just go to Tenth, but to go all the way to the end of, of, of the, the road, right into the city, the city limits. So that, that's something that was interested, uh, interesting to us, that we were very excited about the opportunity to do that. Um, and by using the, the existing state grant that we had, the amount of the funding that the city was going to be responsible for was relatively minor in the overall scheme of things. I mean, we're talking something less than a million, um, in city funds, whereas you'd be talking about seventeen or eighteen million for this entire project, depending upon where it ends up with, uh, applications. And we're just in the application process right now, so we don't have, um, plans or anything of that, of that sort. The idea being that we apply for the, we've got it, we've hired one of the engineers that was involved in, the feasibility study, and are using them as a means to, um, apply for the grant, hoping that that, their expertise will assist us in getting the grant, um, approved. Um, all of this was, of course, um, when we finished the community visioning study, this was something that was, um, well documented publicly. We had at least five, uh, public hearings on the subject, and a lot of, we had a lot of drawings and stuff of things that, as much, all along First Street West, the, the, where we were talking about having green strips and where we were talking about having sidewalks and where we were talking about, uh, other issues, including the possibility that we would have some type of a roundabout at the very end. The purpose of the roundabout came about in the discussions with the engineers in terms of safety, because the concern was you've got a lot of young drivers coming out of the school that are not that familiar as, in terms of being able to drive. And then you've got traffic coming in from Jessup that changes speeds right about that point, and, um, the concern all along has been that some of the students aren't familiar enough with speeds and calculating speeds. It's a potential hazard, and therefore, by putting a roundabout in there, and there's a lot of studies about the, the roundabouts and how, and the safety features, and I think your own county engineer, um, Mr. Colleyber is a very big fan of, of roundabouts, so we looked at that as a possibility. We talked to the, um, the residents of the city about that possibility, and, and generally, the, the, uh, the support of it was, was positive, so we've gone ahead and included that as a possibility. You never know what's going to happen when you actually get to the end of the, the application process and what's approved and not approved, but it's certainly something that we've included in the numbers in terms of the calculations. Can I help with anything else?
I think for most of it, um, it, yeah, roundabouts effectively eliminate two, two, not necessarily eliminate, but reduce, uh, two aspects. First off, they, they reduce the speed, as you said, it's one of the, the actual speed control devices. Uh, rubble strips, uh, uh, speed bumps, things like speed bumps, things like that, those aren't necessarily speed control devices, but a roundabout is, so, uh, you're exactly right there. Um, and then, uh, rear end collisions, from what I understand, are typically what's reduced when it comes to roundabouts, but those intersections, like you said, uh, worrying about the high schoolers coming out of that. Well, that seems like you're hitting those conversations.
Just read that, Sam, to get here. How many were in conversation? And, um.
I don't think there's a lot, but I think he hits it on the, I think he hits it on the speed control.
Well, the other.
I mean, don't get me wrong, I would like to see that, that more beautified. I mean, I can imagine, like, a nice roundabout with a little flag in the middle of it or something.
The, the idea is to have some landscaping in the center of it, you know, the welcome to independence sign would be in the, in that area there. Um, the other thing is that part of this, um, this grant that we're talking about would also include, um, traffic study of First Street West in terms of areas that we need to worry about here and there, and should the road be widened, should we have different types of turn lanes, should we have different types of signage? And when we get, when we're talking about the school itself, um, crosswalks, things like that, how should they better be handled? So all that's part of the, the study that'll be done with regard, with regard to the traffic study that will all be part of the grant itself.
I'm excited to see the welcome to independence sign, and then, uh, keep in mind those, those sight distances as well, be able to make sure that the incoming traffic can see each other, but.
True.
It sounds like a very well-needed project, the, the road's been poor for a number of years, so sounds like you're leveraging your funds the way you need it to.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I can say by being involved in the business for over twenty years, um, it dramatically changed when Walmart moved from its former location out to its new location. It changed the traffic, but when the school, um, campus was moved out there, it really dramatically changed the traffic, and safety's got to be a paramount consideration out there, and, um, between the deterioration of the highway and the increased, traffic during certain times of the day, whatever we can do to help, um, improve the safety and, uh, flow out there would be greatly appreciated. It's, uh, it's changed the whole landscape of the city, and I would love to see some more development going on back on West First Street because it's our prime area, and we just need to concentrate on what we can do as not only a city but county to try and help stimulate that.
Yeah, part of the discussion, um, was that if we can beautify that area, some will attract businesses, and if we attract businesses, they'll attract more businesses, and that's part of the concept as well.
Mayor and I actually met, uh, at, uh, Emergency Management, Public Health, and looked at our parking lot out there, which is by far larger than what we need to service that building, and came up with some ideas on how we could add the pedestrian trail and some, uh, green space there, which would be, uh, something that county could contribute toward the project, so. We're welcome to assist in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other conversation?
Just, just in terms of the letter itself, if you could get that to us sometime this week.
I've got it signed.
Well, that's quick, quick response there, I appreciate that.
Brad, why don't this project start? And it's just fun to hear, I need to.
Yeah, it's almost five years out, I think.
Yeah, we're, um, the, the original plan for the, the bridge to Tenth Street was two thousand, was twenty twenty-seven. So, um, and if we get the grant in now, our hope is that if it, if it's approved first go-around, uh, that we would have, we would have the approval, and then they'd start the plans and that sort of thing, so you're still probably talking about, at the earliest, it'd be late twenty-six or most, most likely twenty twenty-seven.
Is this one of those where you have a pre-approval, and then you have to submit your more finite details to have it completely approved?
I'm not a hundred percent sure of that, because we hired the, the engineers to do it, because they've got experience to it, they just had a big project in Waterloo and another project in Dyersville that they did, where they were up in this, near the twenty million dollar mark, and they were suggesting that we add things to the project, because the closer we can get it to the twenty million dollar mark, the more likely it is that the federal government will be interested in looking at it as opposed to some of the other smaller projects that we could potentially have done in, in the short term.
So is this one of the grants that you have to pay for everything? Like, when you start paying for it, then they just send you that small little pit of reimbursement in, or?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that. I honestly don't know the answer to that. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
Do that, thank you.
Do you mind if I sneak out?
Absolutely, thank you for attending, I appreciate it. Okay, next on the agenda, uh, Board of Supervisor term limits. Mr. Wewend, I guess that was your topic.
Yeah, this is one of my constituents reached out and asked if, uh, we were looking at setting terms of limits for supervisors and other elected officials, and it sounds like from our attorney's office, that's, uh, expressly prohibited under state law, so I want to make sure that we have the conversation publicly and, and figure out if we agree with it, or if we want to leave it as is, or request their legislator to look at it again, all those conversations, so. Uh, where, where does the law sit on this?
Sure, so, and, and just to be clear, this is, you know, discussion, a question of what we have authority to do, not whether term limits is a good idea.
Yes, sir.
Um, but it's a good question. Um, generally, as you're aware, the county has the authority to enact, uh, rules, um, person to Iowa's home, home county rule, as long as state law has not, um, covered the, the, the topic in, in some way. It's a legal principle called preemption. Um, so if, if the Iowa code has made a determination about, okay, something is going to be this way, or something's going to be that way, um, it's preempted, and, and the county is not able to take action on it through, um, the county home rule. So the question then is, okay, how do we decide what's preempted or not? Um, there's explicit preemption where the code says, this is the way it's going to be, no one else can make a law about it. We've determined, whatever the question is, we've determined the law on this matter. There's also implied preemption. For implied preemption, look a little bit at case law, um, to help, help us figure that, I won't get too much into the legal weeds, so basically implied preemption is there's a, there's a topic that the county is considering, making a rule about, but look at the Iowa code, the Iowa code says, we'll, we'll just use term limits. Yeah, the county is considering making a, a, a rule about term limits, we can look at the Iowa code. Iowa code does set out qualifications and requirements for county supervisors, uh, but it does not say anything with regards to terms. Implied preemption is where the Iowa code has spoken to that, has created a rule where, okay, these are the requirements to, to run for office as a supervisor, that these are the rules regarding, uh, or a board of supervisor can do and how they get elected. Implied preemption means that, that the, the code has already covered that, that subject matter. So if the county were to come in and impose an additional rule, it would be something that obviously is not covered in the Iowa code.
It appears this falls under implied.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it like this, and I, I think Sean explained this, uh, and I, I reviewed the email that he sent, and I think he did a good job of explaining it. Um, currently, under Iowa code, you can run for office as a supervisor as many times as if the county were to come in and say, okay, you have a term limit of two terms, or whatever it is. Okay, well, that contradicts the Iowa code of being able to run for supervisor as many times as. Um, so that would be, I'm not optimistic that the county would be able to legally impose that rule, both under the legal principle of, of preemption, but then also under, I mean, there is a, there is a code section in the Iowa home rule that, that addresses that. Three thirty-one, three oh one subsections three and four, I think, where it says that the county can act. However, they can't impose rules that are irreconcilable with Iowa state law. And on the one hand, if I, if the Iowa law implies, um, that, yeah, you can run for supervisor as many times as you want, and then the county is saying you can't run for supervisor as many times as you want, that's a direct.
Yes, sir.
Does that make sense?
It definitely, I think, sets the terms of this discussion. So then, I guess, the question becomes, you know, how do we feel about that? And obviously, we're not saying we're against the statute in this conversation, but do we want to ask legislation to take another look at that?
I think it's a waste of time itself, but I look at Clayton Board, serve term, two terms, Dawn and Gary both had three terms, I believe.
Right.
And prior to that, I don't know how many terms did Ralph serve?
Which time?
Seven.
Five or six, I believe.
Yeah. I think it was on several, and Ellen was on for many years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, uh, historically, I don't see it as a big issue, but, uh, that's just my personal opinion.
I, I mean, I don't see it as a big issue either.
We have bigger fish to fry.
Right, and, and not always, you have somebody that wants this job.
You mean, everybody thinks it's an easy job?
Until they get it. And how many times you have, you know, an auditor run opposed, or a treasurer run opposed, or a recorder run opposed? So, you know, there's like, if you're going to set term limits, then you got to have people that want to step forward and run, and I don't see anybody just banging on our door.
All right, well, that was like the ceiling of the discussion.
Any other comments on the Board of Supervisors term limits?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh, appreciate it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'll sneak back to it.
Yeah, well, let you go back to work.
Thanks.
Uh, next, uh, topic is work session recordings.
So I know that we publish, let me use, we publish instead of recording. We publish our meetings to the public. Um, work sessions, in my belief, are a totally different thing. I know Independence has, like, a committee of the whole that meets, um, I, while there are still open to open meeting regulations, where people can come and view them, um, as far as having them take up space and that part of it be actually published, I, I just feel like it shouldn't be.
Fair conversation.
The only thing that I, and I'm not disagreeing with you by any means, my only concern is I think back of when we had the work sessions for the turbine ordinance. Those were highly viewed, they were recorded and published and highly viewed. I mean, ultimately, it's your guys' decision, but if something ever happens where we get into a situation like that, the meeting's not going to be able to be called a work session. If, if you choose not to publish them, we'll have to come up with another way around it.
I think that would require a board action to maybe have those viewed and recorded. Um, I know, prior to being on the Board of Supervisors, when I was a city councilman, they, at the City of Independence, they did not record their work sessions because, number one, it inhibited the conversation and had a tendency to, um, intimidate the department heads on what they wanted to say, that they couldn't feel comfortable saying in a recorded session. Number one, they're not public speakers, and number two, they have a job that they do, and that's their profession. And it just intimidated us, and we had made an agreement at that time not to record the work session, they're still open to the public, they can attend, but they didn't want to be intimidated by that.
And then, of course, the, the conversations, the meetings, the minutes are, uh, recorded. I mean, somebody's taking notes about the conversation, so we're not exactly circumventing that conversation. Uh, we haven't imposed any limits on ourselves to say that we must publish these recordings, have we? I don't think it sounds like we're, we're violating anything, so, I mean, it sounds like they're available if folks want them.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess it's up to, you guys can just make the decision if you want the work sessions, um, recorded and not published. Do you want them not recorded at all? Or then you can, we can put in the motion that under special circumstances, if there's a work session, you can re, make a motion to have that before it happens, have it recorded and published?
I think a good idea, just to say, you know, folks might actually want to hear about this conversation. So have that conversation beforehand, to say this, this will be recorded, this won't be recorded.
I'd welcome either one of you to word craft that motion.
Let me, let me see if I can record that motion. So I make a motion to have our work sessions not to be published, and the link is only valid for the three members on the board and our auditor, because that's technically, that's all we need to have that link available for. And if there's something that is special that has a glaring need for the topic to be present in it, then we will, at that point in time, um, potentially record that set and publish that set. Yeah.
So, so basically, the work, work sessions will not be recorded or published unless.
Recorded, but.
Okay.
I think that's.
I'm, I'm going to throw out an example right here. We currently have our regular session going. Once you guys have completed the items on the agenda, or the items for, um, decision, we are going straight into budget workshop.
We will need to close that, and then close the meeting, and then go into a workshop. And once that meeting is closed, then the, the link is closed.
So then I'll have to create another link to record it.
Yep, that was.
Seems fair, I mean. I'll second that motion.
On favor?
Aye.
All right. Thursday?
Sure is.
Thank you. Okay, ICAP cyber liability.
Um, I, well, this will be paid this week, our ICAP, um, property liability insurance. This is completely an option that they sent to us. John asked if I'd present it to you. We've always had cyber liability with a coverage of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A premium for that was two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine. As you all know, cyber liability is huge currently. So they sent us an optional quote of, uh, coverage of one million, and then the premium would be seven thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars. So basically, we'd have an increased coverage of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and the, um, premium increase would be four thousand two hundred and ninety-eight.
What was the premium again, Chris? Seven?
Seven thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars.
Is this an optional increase in liability?
This is, it's a completely optional increase in our limit. We can leave, you guys can leave it, the coverage at two hundred and fifty thousand, or this is an additional increase.
Did we ask Jason about it?
Let's hear. Then we follow her.
So what are your thoughts? I think.
I would like to have his input on this. You want to table it till next week and?
I got to pay this this week.
Oh.
Can you give him a good call?
I'm here in the meeting, if you need something.
Jason, what are your thoughts?
What are we paying currently?
We're currently paying two thousand eight hundred and forty-nine dollars for coverage of two hundred and fifty thousand. It would increase to coverage from up to one million, and the total premium for that is seven thousand one hundred and forty-seven dollars.
I'd do it. And you're doubling your cost, but you're practically quadrupling your coverage. And cyber environment right now is so critical for protection, and we have to have something regardless per Iowa code or law, whatever you want to call it, uh, to protect us in case of an event, but for the cost to benefit, I'd do it. But.
Jason, is this against ransomware and that type of thing, too?
It's not a protection, it's an insurance. So if you lose your house in a fire, insurance will come in and say, okay, here's some money for it, similar to the site. Similar to the cyber insurance, from what I gather of it. Chris and the auditor's office have been managing that, they do a phenomenal job with that. But I'm guessing it's more of a coverage of, to cover the loss of infrastructure. And the legal penalties if something should happen.
Thank you.
That's like some, for somehow, some way, social security numbers or something gets out there. Will that cover it for, will that cover us with that? Like personal information?
I would assume it would cover that, but I don't know the fine details of the contract.
What's, what's the history? I mean, what, how many folks actually put claims against us? You know, what, what do you see in the, in the, in the industry, Jason, where are, are a lot of counties having to need this, or?
I think we're required to have some form of cyber insurance of some kind, doesn't necessarily specify the amount. What we don't hear in the IT community is the smaller incidences, let's say. A virus here and there that costs five grand, ten grand. None of that gets usually reported in the media. What you hear about is the big ones. You know, like, I'm gonna use an example, like Target years ago got compromised, and they lost millions and millions of dollars because they were. Their infrastructure was compromised. Hospitals get hit, you're talking millions of dollars. So you hear about the big ones, you don't hear about all the little ones. Now, in my department, since I've been here, I think we've only had one minor incident. And that didn't cost us that much, as far as I'm aware. But it's the big ones you have to worry about. That's where getting the larger coverage is important, and I think for the cost to benefit. Might as well. I also have earthquake insurance on my house, so, you know, there's that too. You never know.
Where are we at in the budget? Where would we take this from, and how can we afford it?
The premiums was budgeted for a year ago.
And not this increase of?
Not this increase. Um, it's not gonna make a bit of difference. There's always other areas that can be cut.
Five thousand dollar difference is.
Pretty minor.
Pretty small.
For a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase in coverage.
I'll make you look into, um. To go with that new ICAP cyber lib- liability. And addition, whatever you wanna call that.
Oh, I figured, you're roll calling that one, or no? On the favor? All right. Well, she carries. Okay, meet with EMA directors, Rick Wolfco and Chris Hare, readiness report of field emergency response equipment. Yeah, welcome up, gentlemen.
Usually this week.
The sensors last night were the best here.
That hasn't helped, yeah, that's not helped at all. I'm a firm hater of winter at this point. Sorry folks, for anybody that likes winter, but.
Well, this was a good opportunity to, um, do some update. Chris did a good job of updating. What we've got there for you is. Uh, not only our local resources, but also our district resources. Oh, they don't have a district, sorry. We'll put that, um, yeah, Dawn, Dawn would have that along the way, but there's some other resources that the district does have, but so that's what you've got as a local list then. Okay, and I don't know if you want Chris to go through that, or?
Sure, what, what were you looking for?
Whatever, yeah, whatever you guys, uh, whatever you guys want at this point, so. That's our list of readiness stuff that, uh, that we would have, that we'd be able to deploy with. A little bit on the back history on that, we have deployed, uh, we have to get deployed by. A community, a community that has a need or anything, they put a request in, and then we get deployed through the sheriff's office. So our commission gets notified, our commission chair specifically, if it's something big enough, especially if it's local. All, all you three would be notified in case there has to be a declaration or anything. The way the county has always been since I've been doing this. Um, even if it's within a city, the city comes to our office. And we'll ask for maybe resources, or see if a declaration is imposed, but we've always reacted as a county. Cause then that opens us up and gives us state resources, and then we can use some of this stuff that we have, if we had to pull other, other district, uh, people in. Uh, sheriff's office is notified, we work together on, on all that stuff, so. That's kinda how it works. Historically, uh, we've had cities that have asked for, we had a water main break in Jessup one year, water main break in, uh, Hazelton one year. Uh, flooding in downtown Independence, where we've had, uh, pump lift stations, uh, using the big sludge pumps. Uh, sandbags, we've got the cache of sandbags, we'll put them out and available, and have sand ready, have that readiness available. Command trailers, some of our special events, we've been asked to support the sheriff's office, and some of the special events, we've got. Two permanent locations at Buchanan County Fair, uh, that our trailers, both command, both command units, our communication trailer and command two. Can set out, which has worked really nicely, I think. I'll let the sheriff weigh in on that, but, um, uh, those are, those are kinda what we do, and there's a, the list of what we've got. Chris, what else?
Nothing, uh, everybody right now, um. Everything is deployable. We do have some minor little things going on, but, uh, we have backups for everything, so. I, it's just, it's inconvenient, but it's, we can still work around it. Okay. Yeah, and I realize that there's, we have limitations about this. How much information we, we can, uh. Provide to the public about critical infrastructure and those conversations, so. Um, it sounds like there's a couple maintenance items, but otherwise, everything's deployable. Yeah, uh, you gotta remember our command trailer, both have short lines and generator hookups. Command one, the, the, that is the one we're having issues with the onboard generator, but we have backup generators that we can hook to it. So it's, we will get that fixed when. Funds are, funds may come available to do that, or if I find a grant to get it fixed, um, it's just, we have other means. To keep it going, so.
Cover down.
So we're not trying to squeeze the, the budget dry, trying to get that fixed, cause we have other options at the moment.
With the new facility, everything's kept indoors.
During the winter, everything is kept indoors, um, during the summer, we'll usually take the command trailers out. Um, that way I, um, it was all last fall, I had them all out front. Um, that's because we had fire departments coming in training on how to run stuff in them, so if we have to deploy them to a city, they. They know what's in them, and what capabilities they have, so we don't have to be there the whole time.
But that is important, John, having stuff inside, that's helped our maintenance situation tremendously.
Yeah, I think we, we have every, the only thing that we do not have inside right now is. Chris's trailers and my alumina trailer, well, it's inside now, cause we have the scaffolding, all that stuff on. But Chris's two, the two enclosed trailers are the voting trailers, and then, um.
Throw in one of them, weren't you?
And then the alumina trailer, we just sit outside, but everything else is inside.
Thank you. Well, it looks good to see everything deployable.
Yeah.
That's a good, good sign.
Well, it is, that's one major thing, especially on the state equipment, that has to remain deployable. That's part of the MOU we signed with it.
How much of this stuff is in state?
How much is? Well, if you look over on. This is all just us. This all goes together. If you look over the, the underfunding source, anything that says state, that is owned by them, it's just hobbled here. And I kinda put the, where I got the funds for it. And then I put the price on the, what I have for. Our stuff, not all, not everything, but the, the state stuff, I couldn't find all the old MOUs for like the, uh. The generator and stuff like that, so I couldn't get the cost for that, but that's, that's in the MOU that we signs with them.
That was several years ago, right?
Yeah, we've had that for.
It is, and that's part of the process that we're looking at right now, too, as a commission, uh, Dawn can attest to this, we're getting everything updated, cause it's, it's time. It's time because of the changeover with, um, in the state. With what's going on, uh, both in community services, but with the state mental health, they're part of our twenty eighty agreement. So that's outdated, so that's gonna have to be updated and making sure we get that stuff done, so it'll be a, a good year of getting things current.
Yeah, thanks, bud.
Questions or discussion?
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you much. Public comments. Welcome everybody, Bonnie.
One quick thing, um, when we were talking about the roundabout. Not that I'm a fan of roundabouts, that's a whole different story, but, uh, there's one going on county road home. Um, if you go down three eighty and, and take the exit to, to Codville Turn left, there's one there, there's a couple of them, actually. Um, they don't take care of them, and so they let them roll wild, or is that probably a four foot high weeds? You can't see what's coming from any direction, and it's really dangerous, and I'm surprised somebody hasn't squawked about it that lives around there. But they have it, so I, that, I'm just asking that you keep that in mind, if there are roundabouts that they need to be taken care of.
Yes, sir.
Cut the weeds, cut the weeds, yeah, cut the weeds.
I know they do a pretty good job on ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The one little weed. They're right in the fairway area.
I agree, Bonnie, and I, I wanna make that comment, cause you made the comment about keeping the visibility. It's not putting anything in there, and that is huge, because I've been on some of them too. I wanna see all the traffic coming from all directions, and I'm glad you brought that up.
It's, it's dangerous when you.
It is, yes, it is.
So I think this would be under city control, so with the city limit, so that's.
More like speculay out there, when they talk about the, you know, inexperienced drivers and, and everything, yeah, visibility would be huge.
Some of the, some of the roundabouts aren't necessarily designed for a tractor trailer, semi truck to be able to make a turn. So some of them are actually allowed to go over top of it.
Yeah.
So same conversation, but.
And big fire apparatus.
And everything else.
Big fire apparatus. No, you're not driving straight through. Absolutely. Absolutely.
That car that's gonna always let you show up on your left.
Yeah.
That's hard.
Yeah.
I know when they did the design on the one up on C fifty-seven, they expressly widened. The interior of it to help with those big trailers and trucks.
They had to, cause they had some issues up there right away.
Yep, exactly. And I think they take that into account more and more on the design of these.
Yeah.
Because it is a, it's a real challenge for some of these big.
Yes, it is.
And fire apparatus. Inexperienced fire truck drivers.
So, I'm sorry.
Retired man.
Yeah, I give that up, I give that up a while.
Good comment, thank you. Anything else, public comments?
Question on the fourteen to eighteen year old mind. Is a roundabout gonna do anything better, or is it gonna be just a race thing for them to ride and speed around?
Just start finishing.
What, what's, what's gonna be the best for the fourteen eighteen?
Yeah, I know they've had some rear end accidents out there where people.
Don't obey the traffic.
Yeah, right.
The signage now, the signage now.
I can be added from.
I, I can't speak to that.
You can, you can look at ICAT, uh, Iowa crash analysis tool, um, so there's a website that the DOT puts out, uh, Dr. Michael Palovich put that together. Um, but, and, and I don't remember how far back it goes, but you might be able to see the beginning of that roundabout and the end of that roundabout, and you can make your own assessments from there.
It'd be interesting to see the, how many schools have roundabout, close to them, I think there's one at Starmont, right?
Starmont's been there a long time.
It would, it would be interesting, but, uh, I just see it as being a, uh, like a go-kart track, and, 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 you know. My experience of being in Waterloo and on university is like lookout and Cedar Falls. Cause I don't think it slows a lot of people down, they ram and jam, and, but you can't predict what's gonna happen, you know, they don't pay attention.
Well, I'll be honest, I was actually very questionable of roundabouts when I first heard about them, but they do move traffic a lot better, which is.
As long as people don't slow down.
Yeah.
Or slow down too much.
Absolutely, yeah.
Only thing I can say, I wasn't a big fan of the one going up there in the fairway. But prior to that going in, I know myself, as a deputy. I, I probably worked three fatalities and a couple's very serious. Personal injury accidents, um, since I've gone in, I don't think we've had one serious injury. Definitely never the town pieces that round the mountain went in. So, um, and. Everybody can't keep moving, you're, you're always gonna have those that don't wanna slow down, or go around it, or they have your speeders and. But, um, usually it's just, if, if you do have accidents, and, um, it's. Personal property damage, and very rarely is there any personal injury. That occurs.
And I, and I know our county engineer is very vocal about them. With all the improvements we've done, whether it's widening the shoulders or the roundabout. We have become one of the safest counties in the state, and that's a real feather in the scalp for. Implementing.
I do have one thing for you, John.
Sure.
It was brought up at our, uh, LAPC meeting, local emergency planning hazmat meetings last week. Um, did you see about the fire they had out in Grundy Center? It was a bitcoin, bitcoin farming.
Yeah.
Operation. Um, from what it sounds like, we got a lot of counties that are doing ordinances on that now, cause they're trying to move them around. It's basically a hoop building, all it is is full service. So all it is, is servers, then they bring in big power trucks on trailers, that's what they're running it with. It sounds like it was a spike that caught that on fire, and it was a pretty big hazmat situation.
It sounds like it's tremendous power surge, and it's also hazardous material when they start burning.
Wanted to make sure that was on your guys' radar.
Maybe, maybe Jason's group, I don't know if the IT group follows that, or Jason's still on, but, uh, there's just something for him to be aware of, too.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? I will entertain a motion to adjourn, we can go to the closing sessions. Second, all favor? Alright, thanks, thank you.